Would you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda? Sarah and Dave. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we will have our Human Resources report. Mr. Clark.
Thank you very much. First for your consideration is the professional staff report. We have change in status from probationary to tenure. We have one teacher on special assignment appointment, one SRP appointment, three business office substitute appointments, one business office temporary change in salary, one teacher resignation, one SRP resignation, six SRP resignations for retirement, and we have spring coaching salaries for you as well.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the professional staff report? Second. That would be Dave and Renee. Yes, all in favor? All opposed? That motion carries also.
That's the good part. You're all in favor.
Yes. We're so excited to have you all be a part of our Pittsburgh district. Thank you, and you may be free to leave at this point if you like.
Because you're tenured, you don't have to do anything. You're free. I'm going to be busy.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Clark?
Next for your consideration is the support staff report. We have three clerical retirements, one clerical termination, one transportation appointment, one transportation retirement, four custodial appointments, four custodial resignations, and one food service retirement.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of the support staff report? Okay, that would be Sarah and Renee. Thank you. All in favor? And that motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And finally, we have memorandums of agreement. They're on the consent agenda. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our principals report. Mendon Center Elementary School, Mrs. Clayton.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. Thank you to the board and central office team for all of your continued support, and it was great having you in the building last week to visit as well. It's been an honor and privilege to be the leader at Mendon Center, and I'm very proud to share with you some of the great work from this year. So this photograph here is just our all-school photo. We always start every year with our mantra for the year and all of our kids and our favorite drone photographer. So this year, our saying is "Who I Am," just embracing who we are, our differences, our similarities, and all the things that make us wonderful. Just to begin the presentation, I wanted to take a couple slides just to share with you kind of what's anchored our work at Mendon Center for the year. So as you know from our work over the summer in July, Pittsburgh Central Strategic Initiative, really looking at engagement, rigor, and authenticity for our kids. We've spent a lot of time around welcoming and affirming environment, and now we're moving to that next step of the instructional strategies and routines that really lift the expectations and engage kids. Another Pittsburgh Central document that's been central in our work is our rubrics for our next-gen skills. That's really helped articulate for us what it looks like when our children are effectively doing the things you see here, particularly at elementary, a lot with the learning mindsets in terms of being able to persevere, have that self-awareness, engage with others, and that stick-with-it attitude. Another document anchoring our work is the New York State Framework for Culturally Responsive and Sustaining Education. This has really kind of been like a roadmap for us in terms of where we aspire to be with checkpoints along the way. And last but not least, the state benchmarks with the equity revisions for self-awareness, social awareness, and decision-making. There's overlap between all of the documents, as you know, but it's been really great for us to spend time kind of immersed in this work and being able to make connections between what's happening every day in our classrooms and what the guidance is telling us we should be doing. So with our "Who I Am," at the start of the year, we used this book, Words I Tell Myself, and it was all about positive affirmations, things I tell myself when things are getting hard. And teachers around the building really spent a great deal of time engaging kids in conversations, literature-writing activities to help them recognize their own identities, the role their family plays in that, the role their school plays in that, and what makes them all unique. And what I've done for each of these work samples is I've just kind of tagged an example from the documents I showed you of how it aligns to show you the way in which we've been kind of using these documents this year. Teachers have also spent a lot of time with kids doing goal-setting, and one approach is coming up with one word for the year that kind of anchors their work. I love this one, "chose peace," because I'm always getting in fights, and whenever we get in fights, I try to remember to stay calm and in control so we hopefully will not fight so much over silly things. But that promotion of reflection and goal-setting and kids really getting to know who they are and their strengths. Here's another example of a one word, and I love this one because it ties back to the name that he was given, it's glow, and the name means brightness. And my mom always tells me that I glow, and I know that light is better than darkness. The word glow makes me feel happy and brave, and I know this year will glow. Kind of moving into the academic realm, we've been spending a lot of time on our math instruction this year, a lot with our grouping practices at fourth and fifth, but then also looking at our math routines as they exist in classrooms K5. This is an example of a first-grade class using a math routine called splat, where there's an ink blob on the screen. The kid sees some exposed dots, some covered, and they have to come up with an equation to match it. But what's cool about this is these are, you know, five- and six-year-olds showing multiple ways of solving a problem, bravely standing up in front of their peers with their whiteboards and defending their solutions and having conversations about the way each of them is solving problems. And what anchors all of these math routines and makes them so effective are their consistency and their regular use in the classroom, and the teachers have been really committed to making that happen for kids. And you see a real difference in terms of their risk-taking, all the voices being heard, willingness to share their math thinking, and it goes a long way to shape their math identities that sometimes waver as they get older in the elementary years. With our next-gen skills, obviously creativity and innovation exists in all of our encore classes, but in our writing classes as well. This is an example of a fourth-grade teacher that created six-word memoirs. So the kids came up with topics of significance, what's shaped them as people, and then they had to construct six words to reflect their story. The first one, for example, "He died, I cried, it's okay." A student wrote that after the loss of a family member, so it was a much deeper, more-involved story, but then kids taking that and doing something different with it and expressing themselves. "I'm a weirdo, so what?" I love that one. Along with the CRSE framework, a piece of that is engaging in ongoing professional learning and support, and that's exactly what our teachers have been doing a lot of this year. Our K1 teachers have been implementing Hegarty to accompany the work they were doing with foundations. Hegarty is really looking at the phonemic awareness piece and the sound piece of foundational literacy versus connecting the spelling and phonics that they get in foundations. And it's been great to see the multisensory approach, to see the kids, you know, chopping up words on their arms and doing that oral routine with their teachers, as well as the foundations routine. The two of them in concert have made a really significant difference in terms of foundational reading skills for our K1 students, and that dovetails nicely with the skill-based groups that we're moving towards with the science of reading and just that really targeted instruction. Another resource that teachers have spent a lot of time with is from the University of Florida Literacy Institute. There's a number of decodable texts and a manual that's extremely helpful. We have some teachers piloting that, scope and sequence. So there's been a lot of work done in addition to the very fancy letters training that our reading specialists have all had 12 days of Part I, Part II letters training. Now our learning specialists are becoming trained, and there are turnkey training pieces of it to our teachers, which has been fantastic. We continue to use Ames Web very much for progress monitoring. Next-gen skills at work, this is an example of a kindergarten classroom using those Hegarty and foundation skills, and kids were illustrating CVC words and then adding their own CVC words and just transitioning through the butcher paper and learning to work cooperatively. And this is a great segue and lead into one of the instructional routines on the hub, which is World Cafe. And I'll show you an example. In our fifth-grade class, this is an example of World Cafe in fifth grade. They were doing the Read Around a Problem unit that looked at issues in our world, and the teacher had simply placed photographs on butcher paper, and kids rotated through, writing key words based on their observations of the photo, and it really surfaced a lot of prior knowledge, a lot of connections to new learning, a lot of great information that came right from our kids and their wealth of background knowledge. So it's really exciting to see when you see a routine begin at K and then you see it come to fruition at fifth grade as well. Continuing with our professional development in the center, that's an example of a number-corner calendar. Each of our K5 classrooms is using number-corner as a thinking routine for mathematics instruction. And again, what makes number-corner effective is the consistency in its delivery, so even if it's every other day, it yields great conversations from kids. I watched some third graders engaging in number-quarter today, and the conversations were fantastic, and they were drawing conclusions about equivalent fractions. It came from with them thinking and reasoning and using their prior knowledge. It wasn't the teacher at the front saying, "Now, we're going to do equivalent fractions. Here's how you do it." They were looking at it in pizzas and eggs and rulers and arrays and making connections to multiplication and what they know about factors, and it's just really fascinating to see the kids' thinking grow and develop. We have a number of teachers engaging in a collegial circle around the thinking classroom and mathematics, and that's been a really cool lift in our math classrooms. We have kids working on large vertical workspaces that are made out of showerboard on one side and then like dot wipe-off on the other side, and they work in groups of two, three, or four, and they have tasks that are very low-floor, high-ceiling, and they collaboratively solve in different ways. They look at each other's work. They give each other feedback. There's natural opportunities for extension and engagement. So the teachers have been doing the professional learning, trying the things in the classrooms, blogging about it, reading the text. It's one of those things that's really caught fire, if you will, and created a lot of excitement in the part of the teachers. We've also been using the Math Workshop resource, particularly at fourth grade. That was a grade level where we did the highest degree of regrouping for math instruction. And as you know from my presentation to the board earlier, we're adjusting our practices to align with what's best research-based practices, and we started with the Math Workshop book as our anchor text. It was a very user-friendly thing that kind of helped us get going, and then the thinking classroom is, you know, the next phase of that. Here's just an example of in the thinking classroom, the kids using that vertical white space. The bottom is a third-grade classroom, top is fourth grade, spending a lot of time about what it means to have accountable talk and specifically math talk in the classroom. But you can easily see how one math lesson, done well, like our teachers are doing, just hits markers on each one of those anchoring documents that has really driven our work throughout the year. It's so great to see teachers getting excited about the art of teaching, being able to be creative in their planning and their approaches, but having great routines in their classrooms and high expectations. And you see it K5 in all disciplines, in all the rooms, and it's just the best to be able to walk down the hall and see that. So I close tonight with our announcement that we read every Friday. We always have a little chant to go with our theme for the year, and Rich is going to help with this. And I put this photo here for Shayna because it's one of her favorite students. So "I am brave, I am unique, I am kind, I am always learning, I am enough in this world, I matter." This is...
Who I am.
This is...
Who we are.
Except for there's 650 of them saying it every Friday. So it took us a few weeks to get the hang of it, but they finally got it, and they just love like screaming it on a Friday morning. It's a great way to start the day, so...
I love the screaming part.
Yes, they really appreciate it. They're glad we only do it once a week. So, but thank you for your participation, and thank you to Rich Albano, our assistant principal, who is an amazing partner, friend, colleague, and just leads the learning in the building. We're like co-principals, and it's fabulous to work with you. It's an honor, so thank you. And thank you to the board for your support.
Thank you. Do you take your husband's email? Anytime, anytime. Yeah. Oh, the little thumbprint.
The art teachers are fabulous, so...
Sergeant Stan, Rich, I think they were wonderful. The only thing that you could have done better was had a cape and a mask. That guy bottled that from me.
That would have been great. I would also add, this morning, as I came in, I saw Danielle Sargent coming in with a box of tape and supplies because she had noticed some of the artwork had fallen down over the weekend or yesterday. So special thanks to the art department for all of this.
Yes.
I also got a huge kick out of watching Kathy's face while you were, and Kathy is a Sutherland High School slash standards leader slash math expert slash guru. Watching her listen to your math talks, like watching Kathy watch you talk about elementary math was pretty cool.
I also moved out of the way so I could see Denise.
And there you go.
But Denise has been a huge support in our building too, and she's been meeting with our fourth-grade team as a PLC to really do this lift with the grouping, and we couldn't have done it without her. And your really heavy AP Statistics book is awesome.
And then the last thing I would just have to offer is it's true how you can get a sense of a building when you walk in, of what the culture is like, the climate's like, the expectations are like. And when we walk into Mendon Center, it is a real special place, so thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. And I just want to note this guy with the cape, he's a Hegarty hero, and when they do their Hegarty routine, one of the kindergartners always gets in the Hegarty hero outfit, so kids are really into the Hegarty. So, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Next, may I have a motion for the approval of the minutes? Emily?
And Renee. Thank you. Seconded by Renee. All in favor? And the ayes have it. That motion carries. Thank you. And next, we have our 2024-2025 proposed budget presentation and adoption.
Thank you, Anthony. Good evening, and welcome to our 2425 proposed budget for your consideration for adoption this evening. This evening, you will hear in order a quick review of our budget guidelines. You will hear very little, which is interesting, on the enacted budget or state aid. There is not an enacted budget at this point. A review of the proposed 2425 budget, a summary of our revenue, discuss all propositions and legal requirements, and then answer any questions and comments that you may have. Want to give a special thank you to our district planning team and all of our members, along with the Board of Education, for the coordination and collaboration relative to the guidelines. As we begin this process middle of the year and go back and forth with the Board of Education for any adjustments or comments or feedback, you can see that as we present our budget guidelines, we begin with a student-based, student-focused budget. Every budget during any given year has a different story to tell. This year's story was one where we began the year with a deficit, knowing that we'd have to close a $600,000 gap. Next year's budget will have a story that shows that that is incrementally larger, but knowing that if we close this gap this year, that next year's gap will be smaller. And one of the things our district planning team, along with the Board of Education, agreed is that we want to keep cuts away from our students, which is why the first aspect of our budget guidelines, which is forward-facing, is on a student-based budget, where you will see no impact to our students within the district. Our high-quality professional learning is directly aligned to our strategic initiative. What we do know is all of the work that we are undertaking relative to providing the highest quality, highest level of engagement, rigor, and authenticity that's wrapped around with culturally responsive instruction and next-gen skills for our students is supported through our professional development, along with other areas of importance. This is cornerstone to Pittsburgh. We believe in continuous improvement. It is seen on a regular basis through our course offerings, through our teacher center, and elsewhere. We also know, and this is an area that has lengthened unfortunately, we do know that our education is incredibly important to our community, but at the same time, we have a lot of areas to consider relative to finances, specific to inflation and our economy overall, where we need to be considerate. And so, once again, we'll be presenting a budget that's student-based, that also is within the tax cap. Looking now and into the future has been really critical for us as we look at our long-term financial plan, which the board has been privy to. We've shared this within our district-level meetings and have shared this within board meetings, and you've heard me share this, is that our financial outlook, while it's positive, it's not as positive as it's been in the past. So in essence, we are spending more than we're bringing in, and we need to figure that out together, which we've been doing, and we need to do it in a way where we can preserve all the good in our student-based budget, but at the same time, protecting all the things that allow us to do extras because of our bond rating, which is the highest it can possibly be in any rating, which we need to be very thankful for and proud of, but also at the same time, thinking in the future, our capital projects, our balance debt, and at the same time, knowing that we need to be very vocal in our advocacy going into next year, knowing that our state aid proportion is probably not going to be So there's a lot. Every year has its own stories. This year has a lot of stories to it relative to our budget. So we have expiring federal funds. We, and this was wonderful during COVID, where we received $3 million from federal funds to be able to put towards program to help our students get through COVID. Now that we're at the end of that, that money is away, but we still put in programs that were very helpful for our students, and so we had to go through a process relative to what we can absorb in the general budget and what has to go away and look at what makes sense for us relative to being able to have a budget that we can afford. We have the continuous investment or the study around electric buses and knowing that that's coming up and we need to plan for that. We have work that we're doing relative to our infrastructure and our current capital project and also keeping an eye to the future, specific to what are we going to do with our pools, what are we going to do with our HVAC, et cetera. And we have other things that we have to contend with, which every other company has to do as well, looking at compression, looking at the cost of insurance. And then, specific to Pittsburgh, we also have to look at what it means to us when we have less funding than was promised from the state and what are the ramifications for that, and how are we going to make that up? So as we think about this year's budget, we can't think about this year's budget in isolation. We also have to think about this year's budget and the impact on next year's budget and the following year's budget, et cetera. So I want to thank Mike Vespi and Leanne Reister, who's, who both have been instrumental in looking at a five-year, long-term financial plan for us, with the understanding that we have more money going out than is coming in, but that makes sense because if you look around the world, that's happening everywhere. One of the biggest factors that we're being hit with is the concept of increased minimum wage, which takes all of our workers that were at or just below minimum wage and brings them up to minimum wage, and then adds to that the adjustments in salaries relative to seniority and time that they've certainly put in with us, and that cost of compression is significant, which many companies are feeling. We have the inflation that's ranged anywhere between the high eights this year to the threes, and that's a significant amount of cost to the district, cost to our taxpayers, our employees, everyone around us. We've settled almost every contract this year, which is great. We've done so in a manner where contracts have been settled less than the cost of inflation, which is something for all of us to be proud of relative to why people work in Pittsburgh and their dedication to the work that they do. Everything else is going up except state aid. Energy is going up, cost of food is going up, food service is going up, but state aid is going down. And so just again, when you see anything that may come out relative to the governor's budget, if they do say that Pittsburgh has received a 3.5% increase, please read through that and understand that that's not true. If the budget were to come to fruition tomorrow, we would be losing state aid. There's lines within the governor's budget that allocate money to Pittsburgh that we can't use, so it becomes a shell game, and it's real. So we are not going to receive whatever is publicized around that level of increase. We have gone through a year this year, and I again have to thank our district planning team for this, where we started with a $600,000 gap. We looked at primarily how to close that through efficiencies. So are there areas where we can find win-wins, where we can combine positions, where we can look at attrition, wherever we could find areas to cut that won't impact students are the areas that we look to. So we have closed the budget gap. You will be presented this evening with a balanced budget, and that has been done in part, in large part, through one of our values of collaboration, which was with approximately 20-something district planning team members coming together and helping us close this budget together. So with that, before I turn it over to Mike, you'll see in front of you the timeline and the process moving forward. We are at April 16th, which is the budget adoption. We have two dates of significance left. We have the budget hearing on May 14th and the budget vote on May 21st. Mike, if you can come up and take it from here. I want to thank you again for all of your work relative to this budget.
It's really great to have the presentation from the building prior to the numbers review and the budget presentation because really, that's what this, that's what tonight really is all about. It's resource allocation for those programs and services. We do get lost sometimes in the numbers. You know, up to this point, we've provided a very detailed analysis by each department and building, but really, everything that we saw earlier is what leads us to this point. As Mr. Perro said, there is not an enacted budget, so it's been a couple of years now where we really haven't been able to give the board an update at this point in the budget process. Kind of kidding around with some of the newer business officials, if you go back a few years ago... If you go back a few years ago, let's say 15 years ago, it was the norm, right? And so, it's part of the craft that we do. So when we crafted the state aid budget, we reflect all these cautionary statements, right? So there are estimates, as Mr. Peril said, there are estimates in that budget that aren't real, because they're based on estimates that we provided the state as of June 30th, or actually technically September 1st of last year, right? So we're not sure what's going to happen in terms of our final BOSI spending. We're not sure of our final spending in transportation. And there's estimates in that state aid run that are based on our actual expenditures from this year. So this slide just, you know, kind of cautions to say, you know, keep a close eye on that. We don't have a pre-K program. And so, there's a big dollar amount, you know, that's in that line. And as mentioned, federal stimulus is ending. If we look at the executive budget proposal, I know we spent a lot of time on this earlier in the year, but our foundation, a total from what we expect this year and what we were told in the budget, we're getting a $1,161 increase. And then, overall, you can see it's about $121,000 less. So that's the reality of the proposals based on the estimate for this year and what's projected for next year. So then, we go through, and then we say, okay, out of this projected budget, what are we actually going to get? And that's how we come up with a real number in BOSI's aid, in transportation, some of these expense-driven aids. And that's the difference. What I tried to do this year is break out some of the other categories, because there's really nothing new to add at this juncture. So I tried to give a little more detail in some of the other areas, right? So we've talked about a tax levy cap at 2.69%. That has stayed consistent. That was submitted March 1st, and that has remained the same in terms of the budget development. We continue to see an increase in sales tax. You'll hear later in the Treasurers' Report that that's still positive news. So we're under-budgeted, so we expect to receive more revenue. Part of that is the inflation that we see in pricing, and part of that is still a continued spending recovery. In this slide, I'll highlight interest earnings. And again, we're still under-budgeted. We performed very, very well in interest earnings. That's an area that I continue to review and evaluate. And so, we increased the budget. Now, when we started this budget process, we expected the Federal Reserve interest rates to be cut five to six times this year. Because of continued inflationary pressure, we may be looking at two cuts later in the year. So on the one side, on the one hand, that's really good, right? In terms of interest earnings and our cash flow. From a revenue standpoint, on the other hand, it's still going to continue to put pressure in terms of lending, et cetera, you know, car loans, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we'll continue to take that revenue as a positive. This budget proposal, as Mr. Peril mentioned, closed the budget gap. We also know that we have money in savings. In fact, when I talk about the property tax report card later, I'm required to disclose our reserve levels and then talk a little bit about if we end the year positively, how those reserve levels get adjusted. As part of the legal requirement, you see in a later slide, I'm required to submit that to the State Education Department 24 hours after you approve this adopted budget, later in the agenda. But the point here is that we're continuing to use more money to help close that gap. So you can see 40,000 more under unemployment, 100,000 more out of the Employees Retirement System Reserve, and then the EBLR, the Employee Accrued Benefit Liability Reserve, another 50,000. So you can see, overall, we're looking at a total budget of 161.7 million or a 2.69% increase on taxes. I highlight that again, because that's really what people look for. So on the revenue side, really not a lot to update, you know, at this point. It's based on what we have in front of us. On the all schools budgets, this is a different way to break down what's already been presented at previous board meetings. So we break it down from all schools combined, the elementary schools. And we try to look at some of the bigger areas. So for example, in elementary, we look at school support. That's an increase in paraprofessionals that was agreed upon to support an additional elementary level. And again, Melanie's already covered this in her presentation and others in their budget presentations, some of these differences. But this is a unique way to group it, point it out. Pupil Services shows our commitment in mental health services, behavioral specialists that we now have brought over and maintained from federal funds. So this just outlines each of those areas in each of the schools. In Central Student Services, as was mentioned, our biggest increase was out of district tuition placements at BOSI's and some of the expected tuition billings that we see. And we expect to see an increase there, you know, quite frankly, every year. And then, in Central Office, we've talked about this extensively. We're continuing to be committed to the one-to-one instructional technology program. And we are bringing those expenses into the budget, which will then generate more aid in BOSI's. So there'll be an offset after that works into the system. So we've decided to move away from a year-end approach where we primarily focus on that replacement plan for year-end. And we're moving into the front end. And you'll see later in the presentation that part of that is to reaffirm the instructional technology reserve, so that way, we can help offset taxes and spend additional money out of it to support our technology initiative and have a more steady stream. In Central Administration, as previously reviewed, there's a focus in the early part of the year of some additional administrative support from a mentorship standpoint, as Mr. Peril had previously presented. Overall, I spent an exhaustive amount of time talking about our undistributed budget with expenses. And that outlines our standard increase in benefits. And really, slight increase in the teachers' retirement system up into that 10% range, and then a jump into the 13% range for ERS. So a couple of percentage points that actually, again, as I previously mentioned, accounted for a slight exclusion in the tax cap. So when we put this all together, we end up with that $161.7 million budget or a 4% budget-to-budget increase, which is very much in line from a historic perspective of some of the increases that we've seen. I think, you know, probably the one piece of caution is I have to continue to look at the additional FTEs that have really increased over the last five years. And I think that goes part to our work with district planning team and planning for the future, to look back over time. I think to balance the story here, we've added significantly over the past five years. And it's the only reason why we're in a position to really look critically at that now is because of that lack of state support, right? Those are all great opportunities for the district, but is it sustainable, given the state support that is forecast? So we put it all together. It's a nice visual to see where we spend our funds and our focus is on schools. And then, finally, just a quick snapshot where you take the same information and look at it by object of expense. Again, I want to reference the earlier presentation, because really, this is all about, you know, salaries and benefits that support those educational programs and services for students. And you can see from a percentage standpoint, we're very fiscally conservative with equipment. Everyone was very conservative. We made a conscious effort to increase supplies to offset inflation. So that was a 10% increase across the board. The question is, can we sustain it, right? If you look at our overall budget. So I'd like to highlight that. Our utilities were actually in check, still a large percent of our budget, but in check. And then, you see the increase in BOSI's services is a combination of additional support for special education services. But large in part, that increase is based on instructional technology purchases. This is just a nice way, again, to slice and dice, you know, the budget, where 78% really are the excellent staff that supports what we do every single day. Again, our revenue is mostly dependent on the tax levy. So when we look at the factors that limit the tax levy, it's positive, you know, from the standpoint of support. But if the state aid portion isn't keeping up and we're limited on taxes, then really, 96%, 97% of our budget is capped. When you look at an overall budget-to-budget increase of 4% and revenues capped at 2%, the biggest revenue capped in that, you know, 2%, 2.5% range. And then, the second-largest portion, $1,161, it's tough to look at the future from a long-range planning standpoint and be positive. So again, advocacy is going to be a huge piece. And our continued commitment to looking at this budget from a fiscally conservative and efficiency standpoint is also going to be critical going forward. This is the best part of the presentation, because we look at the finish line of what are we voting on? We've got a budget vote. We've got a capital reserve fund, bus purchase, which no tax impact. Again, we're going to use our savings account to buy those buses. Capital reserve for the instructional technology. It just so happens that 10 years ago, the district made a great decision to implement that. It expires this year. We've got to renew it. And we're also asking to spend $500,000 out of it, again, so that we can keep that budget-to-budget increase low with no tax impact. And then, of course, the Board of Education vote. So again, $2.2 million. It's a little bit higher for transportation. But we are out there aggressively trying to make sure our replacement plan is in check. We still have not received approval from NYSERDA on our electric bus study. So we're waiting, waiting, waiting in terms of that. But we are making progress in terms of the planning. But again, this is no tax impact. These are not electric buses. These are actually efficient diesel buses. Here's the actual resolution, just for the public to see. Same thing with the reserve fund with technology. So the ask is basically a savings account up to 15 million that we can deposit over 10 years. We can continue to try to scrape and save money and put it in this reserve so that it'll offset that technology replacement plan so that it does not impact the tax levy or debt. So just fast facts, we closed the $600,000 budget gap. We maintain programs. We're within the property tax cap. That's important. Remember, last year, our tax cap was very, very low. Very easy to understand. We may get some questions from people that say, wait a minute, how can you do 2.69? It's a 2% tax cap. So obviously, it's 2.69 because of the exclusions that we have allow us to go a little bit higher. We're still under the tax cap. So that's an important part of the communication. Budget-to-budget increase at 4%, you know, which is right in line from an inflationary standpoint. And this is fiscally responsible. We're using a little bit more of our savings account. But given the fact that, you know, as Mr. Peril said, the support that we're getting from the federal government is now phasing out and wraps up, you know, I think overall, a very, very good budget. So again, the official action is to approve this spending plan and total action, and that's what we're asking the Board for. And then, later in the finance agenda, that property tax report card. And then, I take care of the required submissions. I'm still required, it's interesting, because we had part one of the federal funds audit last week. We're still required to keep all that information on our website and keep it posted until beyond, a couple of years beyond that audit period. And then, we're also required to maintain some of those positions we added in the general fund budget. So that's, you know, that accounts for some of the pieces that you see. New this year is early voting on top of absentee voting. So I mentioned that, and you'll see that in our communications and online. Again, I apologize for this. It's required, but it's the final part, the ARP funding. It's the final part of our federal funds. We're in the finishing phases of this. Money has to be spent by September 30th of this year, and this will be the final period. And we are on target to spend the remaining funds. Fortunate for us, what we did is when you see these line items that are in this, we've now incorporated these to preserve them in the general fund budget. So we've done a very, very good, efficient job of utilizing federal funds over the last four years, not setting up a federal funds fiscal cliff and presenting, I think, again, a very fiscally responsible budget. So we did a great job with this, exactly what they wanted districts to do with these funds. So next is the public hearing, important step. And then, that's within the no sooner than 14 and no less than seven-day period. And then, we'll have the vote at Barker Road Middle School on May 21st. Questions, comments at this point?
Thank you. All right. And so, next, we will have the BOSI's annual election and budget vote. So first, we will consider the candidates, one by one. And so, I will need your hands shown. So first, we will consider the candidacy of Margaret Burns, resident of West Doran de Coy School District, as a member of Monroe Number One BOSI's Board for a term of office, which will begin July 1, 2024, and end on June 30, 2027. All in favor? That motion carries. There are no noes or abstentions. Next, for the second seat, we'd like for your consideration to cast a vote for Mark Kokonovich, resident of Brighton Central School District, as a member of Monroe Number One BOSI's Board. All in favor? Okay, all opposed. Eyes have it. Seat number three, we are to cast a vote at your pleasure for Tom Nesbika, resident of the Webster Central School District, as a member of Monroe Number One BOSI's Board. All in favor? Thank you. Seat number four, Maureen Nupp, resident of the Fairport Central School District, as a member of Monroe Number One BOSI's Board. Same term of office, thank you. Seat number five, Nancy Sumal, a resident of the East Doran de Coy Central School District, as a member of the Monroe One BOSI's Board. Show of hands, thank you. So we have considered all of the candidates. And next, we will have a vote on the budget. And we will vote to approve the proposed BOSI's administrative budget in the amount of $5,828,000. in the amount of five million eight hundred twenty thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. May I have a motion for that? Accept that? By a show of hands, all in favor. Thank you so much. That concludes the actions regarding BOSI's. Next, we will have the financial report from Mr. Vesby.
Okay, very good. For your consideration is the acceptance of the treasurer's report for February of items to, items to note of importance. We received an additional one point eight million dollars in, in sales tax. And there was, it was a little bit, actually trending a little bit lower. We're still overall trending above, but a little bit lower. School lunch continues to be very consistent. And the recovery plan from the earlier deficits seem to be on track. So that's something that I'm meeting now on a monthly basis. And again, I think they're finding their way with a balance between trying some new items and looking at, at participation. As I mentioned previously, not to repeat, we still are trending higher in interest earnings overall. That concludes my report.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the February twenty-nine treasurer's report? Will be Emily and Dave. All in favor? None opposed. The motion carries.
Okay, next for your consideration is the, the property tax report card. I've got to submit this online. It includes most of the budget information that I conveyed earlier, enrollment, tax cap information that I conveyed two board meetings ago, and the overall inflationary information. I've got to do an estimate of fund balance in this, in particular, how I think we're going to end the year. And I still expect to forecast the year with a healthy unrestricted fund balance at, at that four percent of next year's budget. The most important document, and really the new requirement, is to list all of our reserves transparently, which is attached and obviously is part of the report. And then give an idea of the description of the reserve and our intended uses of the reserve. So previously, I mentioned the reserves specifically that we're using to balance the budget. So it's a little calculation between what the actual balance is as of the end of March and then what we expect the balance to be, you know, pending the end of the fiscal year. So we provided some general increases to what we think those balances are going to be based on the current trend of the budget. Again, it seems to be in a much more positive situation where we're, you know, we're anticipating additional surplus because of the previous record amount of increase of foundation aid, right? That was owed to the district for many years. And then the offset of some of the expenses from the federal funds grants. And then in the revenue category, back to revenues, higher BOSI's state aid, and then continued interest earnings. So on the revenue side, we, we should end in a very positive manner. And on the expense side, the same thing. So that would allow us to grow these reserve funds, and we provide an estimate. It's simply an estimate. At the end of the audit period, all of these will be adjusted and we'll repeat that. But this is more in an effort to be transparent. The final thing I say is, that I'll say with regard to this, it's good, good to note for the minutes that we talked about each of the reserves. And then this is a good reminder and reflection for the board to look at the reserve and fund balance policy and the fact that we've reviewed the use of those reserves in the, in the budget process. So typically, from a comptroller audit, those questions will be asked. And we can say, yep, on budget adoption day, we went through, you had a detailed list. We approved it. We reviewed it. We talked about it at the budget presentation. And it just gives us a chance from a compliance standpoint to, to be able to, to really give that answer, you know, when asked. That concludes my report on that one.
Thank you. We have several actions that fall under our financial report. The first one is a motion to accept the property tax report card resolution. Kim and Sarah. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries. The next motion is that we're asking for is for acceptance of the budget transfer request for technology.
So this is something that we've done for many years, where we look at our anticipated fund balance and we do a budget transfer to fund a BOSI's technology project at the end of the year. So that's what this represents. I'm hoping that by putting that money in the budget, that we get away from this practice. But in the field of technology, I can tell you that I probably already have another request for the next meeting because we continue to try to get ahead and it's ever evolving. But that's what this is, and, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion to accept from Dave and Emily. All in favor? That motion carries. Thank you.
All right. And finally, for your consideration is a resolution to join the New York Liquid Asset Fund. We are currently a member of what's called NICLASS, and that gives us an avenue to invest our funds. This gives us another avenue to invest our funds. Previously, we had a limit of fifty million. This is another limit of fifty million. So this gives us the ability to invest additional funds in obviously a very safe, approved investment vehicle that's yielding, you know, the neighborhood of five point two percent right now. So this is a positive move to be able to, to provide us with more options and diversification from an investment standpoint.
Thank you. May I have a motion to join the New York Liquid Asset Fund NILA? Kim and Dave, thank you. All in favor? The eyes have it. That motion carries. Thank you. And so...
And then finally, just for your consideration is a bid award for paper, and that's on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next, we'll have a curriculum report from Mrs. Ward.
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to have Kathy Curtis, our math standards leader here, still in the audience with us tonight. Kathy is here representing her department and specifically her team of AP, AP statistics teachers from both Menden and Sutherland, who've spent a good deal of time over this year looking at and evaluating a new textbook for the AP Statistics course. And before she shares with you, and you do each have a lovely, fresh copy of your own to borrow and take with you after this meeting so you can peruse it and learn all the things you want to learn about AP Statistics. But before Kathy shares her reasons for recommending this particular text, I want to publicly acknowledge the fact that, despite the fact that this is a math textbook that you're looking at, Kathy took her team through the entire protocol for review of instructional materials. So this has been vetted not only through the lens of is the AP Statistics correct and accurate and well represent, well presented for our students, but they've looked at it in terms of readability, representation, and cultural appropriateness for our students as well. So thank you for acknowledging the importance of doing that with even a college-level math textbook.
Yeah, it's different than in oh seven, when we had an AP Stat request textbook in two thousand and seven. So we have a different protocol, and it's, it's very comprehensive. We've spent some time at ILC and things developing it. And you don't always know what you're going to discover when you go through a process like that. So we had the three other folks on the team with me. And really, the question came from Erica Bonin, one of my colleagues at Menden. It was like, I can't hand out those books anymore. They're two thousand and seven. We have to find a new resource. And I appreciated her saying so and asking. So then we put our team together, asked Melanie if that was reasonable. Watching budgets, it makes me nervous, but I know there's a bucket for instructional materials. So with that, we came to agree that this was the textbook that was our favorite. We also, the other one that was very good, this is the newer version of what we currently have by Bach, David Bach, who's at Ithaca, so he's close by, which we really appreciated that back then. But now seventeen, eighteen years later, we're looking at going in a different direction. The two authors for this textbook are AP readers. They have been in and around statistics for twenty years or more. And so they're part of developing AP Statistics at the college board level. And with that, there was a change in twenty nineteen, and you'll see that in our, in our notes, in our summary, of what the priorities are with statistics. So when we first started looking in November, it was Edition Six. And so we were getting pretty far along, and I thought we were almost done. Edition Seven came, so I was trying to find similar things. And there were a few notable differences, which is also in the minutes. So I think they, as a publisher, are continuously looking at how, how do we better our product? The things that are really stood out to us as why we went with this one, which kind of the top, that top page is really quite a nice summary for you. If I just talk about the, the content, there's four strands, and those are developed, the units are developed around those four strands, probability, different statistics choices. And then the second one, certainly, no matter what, where you come from, what your ethnicity is, you will see yourself in this textbook. So we took quite a number of different, position LeBron James is in there. There's a female golfer in there. There's male and female pilots. So things that you may not have seen in two thousand and seven, that now you're seeing images of a wide variety of people and families. When we talk about rigor and authenticity, it's certainly rigorous as an AP course. It's a great option. Many of our kids are taking it. We estimated one-ten. And we're looking at like one-twenty right now. So we were pretty close. But the fact that it's growing a bit is wonderful. So in the way of topics, like, why would a kid want to take this class? So I wrote too many of them down, but I just want to share a couple. So very relevant distracted driving, right? We want to keep our kids safe. College costs. I just got FAFSA things this week, so that's in the forefront, certainly. Social media, sports, health. COVID's in here. COVID's not in two thousand and seven. So, so data around genetics, real helpful, I think, and very interesting. Once you start looking, you're going to get in the weeds a little bit. So if you're looking for a bubble graph that shows you where should I live, move rather, to be living the longest and earning the most money, that's on one-seventy-eight. And I was surprised, but I ask people this question. Yeah, I know they're going to look. So it was surprising, but we will learn a lot by looking through a text like this. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate the colleagues that helped me make this decision and the opportunity to talk with you tonight. Computer science was the last one a few bits ago. So thank you for always supporting our instructional materials.
Thanks, Kathy, and thanks again for your thoroughness of the process. And Kathy being Kathy and such an experienced standards leader, new to plan well in advance. So while she acknowledges the budgetary implications, and, you know, AP textbooks are quite pricey, and you can see, I think, this one comes in at a hundred and sixty dollars per book. She planned in advance, and so we have set aside money in next year's district textbook fund allocation to cover, more than cover the costs of this request. So the money is, the money is there. So we would ask for you to enjoy the book between now and our next board meeting. Bring it back to your, the next board meeting, please, so I can return them to Kathy. And at that point, we will ask you to take action on approval of this for our AP Statistics courses for next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to congratulate Nellie Yandek again on her tenure recommendation this evening. In addition to being a speech-language therapist at Menden Center, she's also our committee on preschool special education chairperson. And she does a phenomenal job of arranging for services for preschool students and making really good, positive relationships with families who, many of them are part of our school community for the first time when their children are going through that preschool process. So just congratulations and thank you to Nellie. Our committee on special education and preschool special education recommendations are all on the consent agenda this evening.
Thank you. There is a need this evening for an executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the executive session need? Okay, that's Jeff and Renee. All in favor?
And for your consideration, Sutherland High School DECA Club has a field trip to Anaheim, California, for your consideration.
May I have a motion to approve the field trip to Anaheim, California for DECA? That's Dave and Sarah. All in favor? No opposition. That carries.
And next is a technicality and bringing back to your, for your consideration. We were a day off with the robotics forecast for their trip to Houston, Texas. So you can see the confirmed dates in front of you, for your consideration.
Thank you. A motion to approve the amendment to the Pittsburgh Robotics Team field trip. Renee and Kim, thank you so much. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries.
I have to thank all of you so much for this next item. In particular, probably two board members who have really closely read every single policy and have come back with different questions and, and items to make sure it's perfect. And we are in very good shape. And so for your consideration is the BOSI's two thousand and twenty-four policy audit recommendation and approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the BOSI's two thousand and twenty-four policy audit? Oh, I'm sorry. That would be Kim and Ren-
No, it's, it's both. It's Kim and Emily.
Emily.
They deserve it.
Thank you. There they are.
We do not call people out at this meeting. A very sincere thank you to both of you.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you. Also would like to recognize music teachers from Cockins Road, John and Robin Beal, for their musical Midnight at Midday, attracting both local and national media attention, but at the same time, aligning their work to our strategic initiative, which is relevant and authentic activities in instruction. And boy, that was fantastic for them to, to do that on their own. Similarly, Dan Hosey, Sutherland High School science teacher, had created a video for, well, it went to all of Southern measure we created for. It was amazing, though. He sent it to me, and, and I reviewed it. And he then sent it to Sutherland High School. We showcased it in one of our mailings home. But he completely explained what an eclipse is really like. And so I want to thank Dan for his initiative relative to the eclipse. I also want to thank the town, the village, and our Pittsburgh Maintenance and Grounds for their collaboration and execution of making this a safe experience for all. Congratulations to our district for being named one of the best communities for music education for the nineteenth straight year. And another congratulations to our high schools as being identified as Unified Champion Schools. So you may have heard of things like Project Unify and activities like Young Athletes Unified Club, Spread the Word Campaigns, Respect Weeks. Our high schools, I believe, and I have to confirm this, are the only schools in New York State to be recognized as Unified Champion Schools, which is amazing. Part of that process is through Special Olympics and the U.S. Department of Education. So quite a sign- so quite a significant recognition. A couple other updates. Our capital project is well underway. We are at near 100% completion for our intruder locks on all of our doors of areas of large assembly. So I believe we are at 100%, and the areas that we're looking at now are side doors and smaller discreet doors that people wouldn't see, but we want all of our doors to be secured. So we're almost at 100% there. We are on time for our work of our front entry double-door secured vestibules, and this work will be conducted primarily in the summer, with some of the staging taking place this spring. Given the significance of this work, we'll be communicating in the near future how to access different buildings during the summer, and we'll also, per the law, post and communicate any areas that may be in need of minor asbestos abatement, which is very typical during any kind of capital project, and especially with older buildings. As this work begins, we await approval for the next phase from the state regarding the larger scope that involves Barker Road, areas like the Commons, the technology wing, the Mendon High School science, and world language classrooms, counseling areas. And so we're hoping for approval for all of that work to occur this fall. The other thing I'd like to update the community on and the board is bringing this back to our really thoughtful succession planning model, knowing that we'd have several retirements in this year and the previous year. So we have hired, obviously, Heather Clayton as our ASI, thanking Melanie again to stay on with us through November to assist. We're in the final phase of hiring a principal replacement for Heather at Mendon Center. We're also at the final phase of hiring a principal at Allen Creek for Mike Biondi. We are also at the final phase of hiring a teacher center director for Julie Barker. And again, I've shared this before, but to highlight some of the significance of this turnover, I share that on average, for average Pittsburgh Central School District years of experience at the principal level for five elementary schools, next year, our average amount of years will be .8. We have our athletic director completing his first year, our CSE coordinator for her first year, our SEL equity coordinator completing their first year, completing year two as administrators as our assistant superintendent for business. We've just recently tenured our people service director, our assistant superintendent for HR, and we have three high school non-tenured assistant principals. So we have a significant turnover at the administrative level. But I'm very, very excited and thankful and appreciative of those that are willing to hang on a little bit and help with mentoring, and also with the high level of candidates that we've been able to secure. And all of our hires to date have been extraordinary, so we're in very good shape now and looking towards the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have, let's only say, a motion for the consent agenda. Emily? Dave? And Kim? All in favor? That motion carries. Thank you. Next, is there any old business? Is there any new business? And there is no public comment this evening, so may I have a motion for adjournment? Sarah and Renee, thank you. All in favor? That motion carries. Thank you so much.